Next, we have Ms. Jean Joseph.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not so quite elegant as everyone else, but I am also a product of Dearborn Public Schools, Henry Ford, Woodward, and Fortson. And I was reading what's up on the ruler there. Will you go through any lengths to support public schools? I have, and I always will. So anyway, good evening. I'm here this evening in honor of my nephew, Imad Fadlallah. We brought Imad here from Lebanon November 1978. At that time, Imad was 18 years old. His dream and aspirations were to make a better life for himself and his family. In three short years, he was able to bring his parents and six siblings here to the United States. His dedication and perseverance to education for himself and his siblings produced, including Imad, two principals, one engineer, and four pharmacists. In two days, March 13th, will be the second anniversary of his passing. Imad treated all students like his own children, wanting the best for them. February 11th, 18 meeting, and today, you have heard from many of our community members of all he did. Imad has accomplished in his short life more than most of us have done in our lifetime. I am here before you as a family member, asking this body not to deny us the respect we feel is now too much in honoring our loved one. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Mrs. Christine Furquotti. Did I get that right?
Good evening, board members. My name is Christine Furquotti, and I'm an instructional coach and former teacher at Stout Middle School. I began my career at Stout in 1989, and I'm still walking the same halls almost 30 years later. In this time, I've had the pleasure of working with so many wonderful students, parents, teachers, and administrators, many of whom are still are sitting in this room tonight and have strong ties to Stout. Throughout these years, I've seen several administrators come and go for various reasons, both personal and professional. As we all know, in any place of business, schools included, change is a constant. Each one of these administrators impacted Stout in a unique way. As you are considering naming Stout the Stout Team Meeting Room after Imad Fadlallah, I'd like to describe how Imad impacted our Stout community. Imad Fadlallah was a visionary who benefited the students and faculty with his tireless drive for need, for needed school improvement through professional development and facility improvements, always putting students first. He came to Stout as an acting assistant principal in 1990, taking John Cotter's spot as he was promoted to principal. I remember the first day I met him during lunch duty. He was not one for initial small talk. I introduced myself, asked him a few questions about where he came from, his background, and then proceeded to talk about the way things were at Stout. His eyes gazed around the room, watching the students' interaction, and getting a feel for the atmosphere and tone of our building. I did not realize at the time that he really was more interested in the student body than how great the pizza rolls were. As time went on, it became very apparent to Imad that our staff meetings must become educationally more productive. Our most time-consuming agenda at that time was gum chewing. Out of frustration, I remember the day that he finally put his foot down and exclaimed in his voice, and everyone knows how gruff it was, and he said something like, "We're not going to talk about gum chewing anymore." He said, "We're going to talk about and focus on professional development, best practices, and student learning." A major shift at that time had begun. This included many hours of analysis on MEEP data, dissecting state-of-Michigan standards and benchmarks, and studying and sharing best practices. He was one of the first administrators to begin book club here in Dearborn. Behind his office, there was a back room there, and we would all gather grade levels during our prep hour and read books such as Classroom Assessment for Student Learning: Doing It Right, Using It Well by Stiggins, or I Read It But I Didn't Get It by Chris Tavani, or Whatever It Takes by DeFour. And of course, there was the Harry Wong videos and his books as well. All the books were purposefully selected: Spring Boards for Reading Apprenticeship Framework, grading, PLCs. Initially, teachers resented that they had so much work to do and so much on their plate, they really didn't want to start doing this. Yet, through these Socratic seminars, change began. Imad had us reexamining our practices and implementing new strategies. As a result, students reaped the benefits, and learning and engagement soared. Book clubs latched on in our other buildings, and continuous professional development, as we all know it today, is commonplace. Not only did he have a vision of making changes among the staff, he knew that the room had to be made, he knew that room had to be made for our growing enrollment. I do not know all the details of how the H-How Wing became, came into existence, but I remember so many mornings he would come in with bags under his eyes and say that he had meetings after school and late nights regarding the addition. I remember one day in particular, he told me that he had to fight to get bathrooms, and a few extra feet added on to the classrooms. Everything had a price, and in his case, his time was part of that price. Yet, in the end, he managed to get his way. He put many countless hours of time away from his family and thought into creating an eighth-grade air-conditioned classroom wing that would last for years to come. I used to call it the Country Club because in the rest of the building, we didn't have air conditioning. Every detail was thought through, including an activity room and a team meeting room with open access for district usage, where educators, where educational speakers, collaborative, collaborators, professional development, and students could gather, grow, and learn. The idea of over 100 people being able to use it before, during, and after-school hours from all over the district was unheard of at that time. Imad knew the educational needs of our community and knew that it would benefit so many different groups, both staff and students alike. After 9/11, I remember he had a camera crew from the local news station, H, local news station in H-How interviewing a few of our Arabic-American students for the purpose of dismantling phobias about our community here in Dearborn. At that time, people didn't understand what was happening. Imad did, and he wanted to squelch these erroneous fears by letting people hear what our youth had to say about such happenings. He knew it was important for students' voices to be heard by Metro Detroiters. And he loved our students and community and supported it in every way he knew how. He wanted to right the wrongs that were taking place in the public eye. I could go on and on with dozens of additional positive recollections of Imad, in the interest of the board's time. I could think of no more appropriate way to honor his memory at Stout than by renaming, in his honor, the Stout Teaming Reading, the Stout Team Room he helped to create. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, next, we have Ms. Maryam Jalul, who will be speaking about Imad Fadlallah's
Hello, my name is Maryam Jalul, and I am a product of Dearborn Public Schools through and through, having attended William Ford, Woodward, and Fortson High School. My mother has been a dedicated teacher at Dearborn Public Schools for 26 years, and to this day, hundreds of students can attest to the impact my mother has had on their lives as an empathetic teacher who's wholeheartedly invested in their growth. She's someone who's undoubtedly had a great impact for many years in the district. But my mom will be the first to tell you that comparing her or anyone else's impact on the district to the late Mr. Imad Fadlallah's would be like comparing ripple waves to a seismic tremor. We aren't talking about someone whose work inspired many lives, but someone who changed policies, set precedents, raised expectations, and transformed an entire culture of two buildings. Mr. Fadlallah turned Fortson High School into a place where attending college was an expectation, where scholarships were applied to and won, where students believed that they were worthy and deserving of an education that was invested in them. This is not a matter of opinion, these are hard facts. There's no denying that there is a fundamental difference in what Fortson was before and after Mr. Fadlallah. My siblings and I went through Fortson High School. My siblings and I all went through Fortson High School, my older siblings having experienced Fortson pre-Mr. Fadlallah, and I having experienced Fortson with a Mr. Fadlallah present, and graduating one year post his departure as principal. My mother, who was incredibly involved in our education, attending every parent-teacher conference, meeting with counselors, and advocating for her children, will be the first to vouch for this difference in culture. Under Mr. Fadlallah's watchful eye, Fortson went from a rowdy environment to a studious institution that treated education with care. From a place where my mother's oldest daughter never took the ACT because her counselors didn't find any utility in it, to a place where her youngest daughter applied to and attended Harvard University. This brings me to the final and most important point. Mr. Fadlallah fundamentally shifted what students who entered these buildings believe is possible. Attending top universities, let alone Ivy Leagues, was never in the realm of possibilities before his tenure. It was under Mr. Fadlallah's guidance and investment that I felt bold enough to apply to Harvard University my senior year and was accepted, an accomplishment that Fortson had never seen before that year. And in the years that followed, a wave of Fortson students also began applying and being accepted in unprecedented rates. With a 5% acceptance rate, very few school districts in the United States, really in the world, can claim that they send even one student to Harvard, let alone multiple. This is a prime example of what can happen when students are educated in a culture where they feel respected and empowered, a culture that Imad Fadlallah ushered in. It may be easy to say at this point that correlation does not always imply causation, but stating that Imad Fadlallah is the reason our district can boast about Ivy League-level students is not far-reaching, and nor is it a mere claim. It's rooted in fact and reality, and I'm standing here before you firsthand telling you that I would not have dreamt of applying were it not for his guidance and encouragement. And as an added point, shortly after I was accepted, I received a personal call from him. He was beaming with pride as if he was congratulating his own daughter, and when I dared begin to thank him, to express that it would not have been possible without him, he cut me off abruptly. "This is your accomplishment, not mine," he said. Such was his nature, to refuse recognition for students' achievement, no matter how much I insisted he played a tremendous role. Finally, when we ask ourselves what makes a public school district attractive, what makes it a place we want to send our children, we look at test scores, graduation rates, and college acceptance rates. Without Mr. Fadlallah, Dearborn Public Schools simply would not be a place where students could dream of an ambitious future. Mr. Fadlallah sent, Mr. Fadlallah sent a tremor through the district, and no namesake, no statue in his honor will ever be enough, but we can start somewhere. I look forward to visiting the Imad Fadlallah atrium at Fortson and maybe sending my children to Imad Fadlallah High School one day.
Next, we have Mr. Ali Nasrallah.
Good evening, board. Community that I love so much, the greatest community in the world, Dearborn community. I promise I won't take much of your time. My bedtime's in about 20 minutes, so.
Ours too.
When, when I think about what I want to talk about, it's hard. There's so many great memories, so many thoughts come to mind. And I'm a product of Oakman Elementary School, Maple Elementary School, Lori Middle School, the first graduating class of Eunice, Wakala Middle School, and most proudly, Fortson High School. And I remember senior year, when I was trying to decide what to do with college, I secretly applied to U of M. You know, I'm a, I'm a kid that grew up in Dearborn my whole life, and I was one that believed Dearborn was one of the seven heavens. And Mr. Fadlallah taught me that Dearborn is one of the seven heavens, but there's six other to look for. And he, he found out, and he took me into his office, and he told me, you know, "You're going to U of M." And I went to U of M for undergrad. And because of him, I went to U of M for medical school. And because of him, I know that the legacy that I want to leave behind isn't just being a great physician, it's not being recognized for my skills, it's, it's the legacy of giving back to others, the legacy of loving my community, that recognizing that a brown kid who grew up with parents who did not go to middle school, with a mom who went to high school, has the opportunity to, to seek greatness and to give back, and to be able to give back to my community is a legacy I want to, I want to give. I want to be like Imad Fadlallah was. And the more I think about that, the more I think of my sister. If it wasn't for Imad Fadlallah, my, my parents grew up in different times. The history was different, their experiences were different, and we're all part of arcs, we are all made up of the experiences we went through. And when my sister was applying to college, it wasn't that, "No, you can't go to U of M," it was, "Ask Mr. Fadlallah and do what Mr. Fadlallah says." And because of Mr. Fadlallah, my sister went to U of M Ann Arbor for undergrad on a full scholarship, and then she went to U of M Medical School on a full scholarship. And where's the, where's the camera? Where's the camera? Zoom into this. Can you, can you zoom into this? Where? Can you zoom into this?
The cameras are automated.
Where? Right here? Can you focus on that? All right. Can you guys see that? I know you guys had a long night, I want to make this a little, a little more fun. Because I know Mr. Fadlallah's watching us drinking his shi right now. The person on the bottom left is Muhammad Naghi. He's a teacher in this room. Give him a round of applause. The person in the upper left is Jibris Saad. He's a doctor at Boma Royal Oak. And there's so many great people in there. There's Amani. Amani, what are you doing again?
A psychologist.
A psychologist. And then there's Adam, who's a doctor, and then there's Sam Bazir, who's a lawyer, and then there's 30 other of us that went to U of M that year because of Mr. Fadlallah. So when we think about, honestly, doing this to honor Mr. Fadlallah's legacy, in all honesty, we're only honoring the school that we put his name on. Because Mr. Fadlallah taught us that the legacy that he wants for us is the legacy of giving back to our community, and that's how I hope to honor him, by giving back to my community. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Kareema Abbas.
Good evening, board. I'm here really just as a parent. My first child entered Fortson High School in 2006, and I currently have my fourth child there this year, as she will be graduating. So I have had four children go through Fortson High School over the last 10, 11 years, Alhamdulillah. I'm here just to say that, to me, Mr. Imad Fadlallah was a very courageous man, and that's why I think he deserves to be recognized. I don't know all of the stats of the other people have brought forward here of all of the great things that he's done in his job as an administrator, but I can tell you, as a fellow administrator, I've been a school principal for 15 years, that those accomplishments are not easy. And the impact that he had on those of us that were parents at the school was extraordinary, and it was larger than life. He was a great man. He had a large impact on students. I can remember going to Fortson High School cafeteria for parent-teacher conferences, which in 11 years, I haven't missed one for any of my children. And he would be standing there in the cafeteria, making himself available to parents. And after I had had a very disastrous meeting with one of the faculty, I went up to him and I told him, "I really need to talk to you." And he gave me time. And who was I? I was one of hundreds of parents standing in that room, but he made me feel important. He made my children's plight important. He was courageous because he stood up at a time when things, certain decisions that he had made were not popular, but they were right. He always believed in doing the right thing, no matter what the cost of that was. And I have a lot of respect and admiration for him for standing up for our community and the values of our community. I'm standing here before you. As an American, I've been a Muslim for 30 years, but I wasn't born Muslim. And I will tell you that I have never been more proud of a man in my life as Mr. Fadlallah because he stood up for our community and our values when it wasn't the popular thing to do. And for that alone, I feel that he deserves recognition. He was an unfailing advocate for students, for community values, for parents, for community. And for that reason, I believe that he does need to be recognized and that he deserves it. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Brenda Zebon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Zebon. I'm a former Stout parent, former Fortson parent, and a former Edsel Ford parent, and I'm here to give you a parent's point of view on the resolution to honor Imad Fadlallah. Imad Fadlallah taught me to ask for what I want instead of just stating what I think, because yes, he educated parents also. I want you to build a fourth high school in Dearborn and name it after Mr. Fadlallah. But I don't see that possibility on the horizon, so if you can't do that, then please approve the resolution to name both the Team Meeting Room at Stout and the atrium at Fortson after Imad Fadlallah. I agree with the comments at the last board meeting that the district has had, and God willing, will continue to have many wonderful principles. When my kids were at Henry Ford Elementary, Stout, after Mr. Fadlallah left, and Edsel Ford, those schools had excellent principles. But from many parents' points of view, Imad Fadlallah was exceptional. I have a few stories for you to illustrate what made him different. The first time I ever heard anyone mention Imad Fadlallah, they referred to him as Mr. Meep. So I went to my first Stout PFSO meeting in 2001, expecting to meet some guy who only cared about test scores. Boy, was I ever wrong. Instead, I met a principal who studied the MEEP data, looking for clues as to why kids succeeded and where the school failed, not where the students failed, where the school failed by not teaching the right thing. And he explained all of this to us at parent, at parent-teacher meetings. They should have called him Mr. No Child Left Behind, but that term wasn't invented yet. While at Stout, he invited parents to participate with teachers in the book club that was reading "Whatever It Takes: How Professional Learning Communities Respond When Kids Don't Learn" by Richard DeFour. That was the first time I'd heard some of those terms. I walked away from those meetings impressed by the total team effort at Stout and grateful that everyone accepted parental input. When eighth-grade promotion came along, he gave kids and their parents one heck of a speech, telling them, no matter where they were from or what they had accomplished thus far, they could choose to do anything with their future. He believed in every one of them and made it clear to us that our kids could succeed at anything if they made good choices. When Stout was about to experience the Great Student Shuffle of 2004, with half of its students being moved to other schools, we had an end-of-the-year family night event for current and future students. He had relief in his eyes as he pointed out a group of current students take it upon themselves to show next year's new students around. He had his heart and soul in that school, and the staff was like, truly like a family. That is the kind of environment he fostered, and then he gave it up. Why? Because 2,400 students needed a principal and didn't have one. In fall of 2004, I had a seventh grader at Stout and a freshman at Fortson. I went to my first PTSA meeting at Fortson, and it was quite different from what I was accustomed to. When I asked a question, the principal acted like I was from another planet, and then I never saw him again at another meeting. Fortson had an empty office with a revolving door. At the December 8th, 2004 Stout PFSO meeting, Mr. Fadlallah announced that he would be moving to Fortson as principal. Stout parents lamented their loss, but inside, I felt grateful. Stout had Mrs. McConkey and Mr. Mashur, both mentored by Mr. Fadlallah, ready to step up. Fortunately for Fortson students, Mr. Fadlallah could not resist going where the need was the greatest. When Imad Fadlallah walked into Fortson High School, I don't think he knew he would be criticized at every turn for his efforts to make education at FHS better. He made every decision based on what was best for the student, whether it was popular or not. He demanded more from his students, teachers, and counselors. He met head-on the frustrations of trying to make changes in a school that had embraced the status quo. Who would have thought that he would take on a difficult, difficult job and then receive backlash from every corner, including some former members of the DPS Board? A lesser person would have thrown in the towel, but he was exceptional. We asked him to keep our kids safe, and he kept them safe and sometimes took the heat. When he asked, when we asked him to help our kids become good moral people, he supported their efforts to help others. When we asked him to help our students become people who would contribute value to their world, he stood behind them as they spoke up for themselves and their fellow students. We watched in wonderment and pride as they challenged the naysayers, and I'm sure some of you remember when Fortson students and parents packed the board, boardroom and the lobby. We asked him to help our students reach their highest possible level of achievement, and under his leadership, through the efforts of many at Fortson, more and more students began competing for grades, honors, and scholarships. He added more AP classes at Fortson, and the number of students taking AP classes and receiving college credit increased by about 30%. He enlisted the help of many to expand the possibilities of our students, and the funnel in the Fortson Counseling Department that pushed students to HFCC and Wayne State developed some serious leaks. He helped Fort, Fortson students dream bigger dreams. When Mr. Fadlallah came to Fortson, less than 5% of graduates went to four-year colleges, and 95% of graduates who attended college stayed local. Those numbers turned around during his time at Fortson, as each year, more students applied to colleges outside of Metro Detroit. This number reached almost 30% by 2010, including Ivy League schools. During his last couple of years at Fortson, students received over $3 million in scholarships. That number continued to grow as more students considered possibilities that were previously not there, not in their reach, because they were in a climate that limited their potential. When the PTSA gave out its first scholarship and he read some of the student essays, he went out and personally found more money to give more scholarships because he could not bear to do otherwise. He considered our opinions in so many ways and always took the time to explain his position and the district's position. He made us feel, as parents, like the school was ours. He had to watch as his students were accused of being less American than others, and sometimes of being terrorists. He himself was subjected to character assassination in the media, and Fortson was unjustly labeled as Bella High. Never once to waste a teaching opportunity, he used his commencement speeches to teach and encourage Fortson students and parents. In his last speech in 2010, he told students, "Education is the only weapon capable of defeating ignorance, stupidity, bigotry, racism, inequity, and injustices," encouraging them all to continue their education. So here's the answer to what makes Imad so different from all the other people in the history of this district. He was an exceptional leader who faced an exceptionally difficult task and at a difficult time, and he succeeded where others had failed. He tackled the problems he faced with integrity and compassion, enlisted the teamwork of teachers, and when necessary, made unpopular decisions and stuck to his guns when accounted. And as he accomplished all of this, he passed along his abilities to many that are now working diligently for Dearborn students as teachers and administrators. So please, please, recognize this exceptional man and pass the resolution.
Good evening. Moment of silence, please.
Good evening, community members. I am here today in regards to the resolution to honor Mr. Aymad Fadlallah in both Stout Middle School and Fortson High School. As a Dearborn resident, former Dearborn Public School teacher, and former 2010 graduate from Fortson High School, Mr. Fadlallah was and continues to be a role model for us all. As a student, I was inspired by his demeanor, resilience, and patience in many adversities that he faced. Keep in mind, many of those adversities were because of the students and community he represented. He stood up for his community always and always put students first. The positive culture that he brought to Fortson High School is something commendable and is something that we continue to learn from today. I am one individual whom Mr. Fadlallah influenced, which led me to pursue my master's in educational leadership. Awareness needs to be raised in this community on the most noble profession, which is teaching our future generations. Mr. Fadlallah's honoring is one of the first steps this board can take to build a positive culture in this community on the positive role educators have in this community. I urge all board members to vote to pass this resolution to honor the great Mr. Aymad Fadlallah. I also want to thank the committee that brought this resolution forward. Thank you.
I do, though, want to make it clear that there are two different resolutions on today's agenda. And the way that this is divided up is into two separate resolutions. So there is one for the naming at Fortson and then another one for the naming of Stout. So there are two resolutions on the agenda tonight. Next, we have Abdullah Hamun.
Good evening. I hope you treat me as casually today. I'm here just representing myself and my family. And I'm here to speak in support on behalf of both resolutions. If I might start with saying that when Mr. Aymad Fadlallah, the late side, Aymad Fadlallah passed away, banners were put up speaking that those who will feel his loss the most will be the orphans. And I reflected on that statement. And I realize now that walking into the halls of Fortson High School, I was an orphan of our education system. An orphan that failed to realize equity within a system, that tried to measure my success through a set of metrics that failed to realize the genius within me. And I had the privilege of being in that Fortson auditorium when Mr. Fadlallah decreed himself to be the sheriff of this town. And for those who know me, they know I'm unabashedly biased in my love towards Fortson. And it's because I had the privilege of attending Fortson during the Fadlallah years, which would be the equivalent of maybe attending the University of Michigan during the Bo Schembecker years. It's a point of pride. And he had the audacity to look in the eyes of the students and see within them what they had yet not recognized. And that is the levels in which they could reach. And if you would allow me to just say that the measure of success of Aymad Fadlallah should not be simply in the tenure that he had within Dearborn Public Schools, but it should be looked at the impact far after he left Dearborn Public Schools. You have heard and you will continue to hear of the stories of his students, of his fellow colleagues, the administration, and the impacts these individuals now have on their community because of the impact Mr. Fadlallah had on them. And I dare say that that should be attributed to him as well. We have children within our community who have blossomed. And their impact is immeasurable. And this type of impact is known as a generational impact. And that does not come along very often. It's an impact that dared to address the inequities within the Dearborn Public School system directly. And I'd just like to conclude by saying that this recognition is not to take away by any means of the impact of other individuals have had on our students or on our school system. Rather, this is just a small token to a giant within our community that went the extra mile both inside and outside the classroom. I can tell you, and most people actually do not know this, that before I decided to run for public office or seek public service, one of the first conversations I had and requested through my brother, Aymad Fadlallah, was with his father. And I sat before his father as if sitting before my own father, asking and seeking guidance. Because the respect you see in this room for Mr. Aymad Fadlallah was out of love and out of fear, but out of fear of disappointing an individual who we never wanted to disappoint. So I just want to, again, thank you so much for your consideration and strongly implore you to vote yes to honor and recognize the late side, Aymad Fadlallah. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Amir Zahar.
Good evening. Well, I am here tonight to influence your decision. Please vote yes on both these resolutions. More importantly, while I know that I might look harmless, I'm also here tonight to make sure that when we leave here today, our community knows how each and every one of you voted on these resolutions tonight. In Arabic, the word and name Aymad means dependable or support. Now, this is a night for joy as it represents yet another opportunity for us to celebrate the love and life of our brother, Aymad. But I'm also a little angry and frustrated. We shouldn't have to fill this room to convince anyone that he's worthy of a permanent monument in our schools. I felt compelled to come here tonight because Aymad actually had a specific and pretty deep effect on my life and an effect on the schools that I think a lot of people don't know about. We can all talk about Aymad as a great educator, as a great man, even as a great American, but I want to take a minute to talk about him as a great Arab-American. I do a few things in my life. One of my pursuits has been sort of preserving Arabic music whenever I can. And over 10 years ago, I had this crazy idea that maybe we should introduce Arabic music into the curriculum at Fortson High School. So I met with Aymad, and he couldn't have been more supportive. Remember, Aymad means dependable and supportive. I started visiting the choir of Mr. Boombaka once a week to teach the students Arabic songs. And within a few months, there was 50 or 60 students onstage singing Arabic music along with their traditional repertoire at their winter and spring concerts. And I remember Aymad came to that first concert that we did. And afterwards, I asked him what he thought. And he just hugged me, and he cried a little bit, and he said, "Thank you." I know that he faced a lot of opposition to dare to allow our culture into the classroom back then. But I didn't hear about the troubles he faced. All I heard was "thank you." Well, it's time for us as a community to say thank you back. The risk he took with me actually blossomed to a Fortson tradition. It led to a class that I taught on Arabic art and performance. And now that same choir performs a few times a year with the National Arab Orchestra. I mean, it really turned into something where people were representing our culture in a positive way. And so what we're doing here today is not a favor to Aymad or his family. No. It represents the least we could probably do, to honor the memory of a man who encouraged hundreds, if not thousands, of young people to be proud of who they are and to support them. Remember. So remember, Aymad means dependable. It means support. This vote should be unanimous on both resolutions. So make sure we all leave here tonight remembering your names for the right reasons. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Muhammad Naim.
Good evening, respected board members and my community members as well. I want to thank Ali Nasrallah for the kind introduction earlier, and I'd like to follow up with my own sentiment. Today, I stand before you as a proud testament to Mr. Fadlallah's investment. This is my sixth year in secondary mathematics as an educator, and I could proudly say that I would not be educating today without Mr. Fadlallah's influence over me. Back in 2009, I did not want to attend the University of Michigan. I had a full ride to Wayne State University on a presidential scholarship. Knowingly that my neighbor was friends with his wife, he plotted a dinner where I would attend with my neighbor, unknowing that his wife was going to be there at the ram's horn on Greenfield. So I went. The entire conversation was about where I was going to college. I didn't expect that. Fast forward three months later, when I made the decision to attend the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, Mr. Fadlallah found me in the hallway and told me, "Did you enjoy the dinner?" I had no idea he was the one who set it up. But I say this short story so you understand that Mr. Fadlallah was the manifestation of a window and mirror. He was a mirror in that he reflected much of what I saw in him, and what I saw in him, I saw in me. And he was also a window in the idea that he allowed me to explore further communities, to challenge myself, to promote myself growth, and to come back to my community a better human, ready to give back. That is his testament. That is his legacy. I completed my two-year commitment within TFA, Teach for America, and I wanted to go back to law school. I graduated in the top 5% of my class at the University of Michigan. I had no business becoming a teacher. When 80% of American teachers come from the bottom third of their college graduating class, why am I supposed to become an educator? That was the voice of every single adult within my community, except Mr. Fadlallah. My own parents encouraged me to forego education and to follow through with law school. But when I confided in Mr. Fadlallah about what I wanted to do and he saw the passion within me, he told me, " redefine your self-worth so you understand that the passion and the investment you give to this world defines how worthy you are and how valuable you are." In six years of teaching, I've been rated highly effective every single year. I took a classroom based on growth, a grade level that had 9%, ranked in the 9% of growth from fall to spring to 99th percentile in one year. I want to make it clear that every single time I hit a fork in the road and I second-guess whether or not I should remain in education, it was Mr. Fadlallah who once again reminded me of the worth that I am for serving other individuals. Every single student I've taught, which is near 1,000 till this day, is nearly an extension of his branch. And that legacy component that everyone spoke to you about earlier remains true. I am his branch, and those thousand students that I have influenced are now an influence of Mr. Fadlallah. That needs to be noted. That needs to be recognized. So I implore the board to please recognize and please honor Mr. Fadlallah with the least you can do with the atrium and the room at Stout.
Next, we have Ms. Deena Shaithunameh.
Good evening. Can you hear me fine? Yep. This feels far away. My name is Deena Shaithunameh. I'm a graduate at Fortson High School, class of 2008, and a former student of Stout Middle School. I went on to graduate from the University of Michigan Dearborn and earned my Juris Doctorate from Ohio State University. And like many students... But go blue! Like many successful young professionals in this room and beyond, I owe part of my success and growth to Aymad Fadlallah. For that, I am here to support the naming of the Fortson Atrium and Stout Team Meeting Room after him, which is the absolute least we can do. And for those of you on the board who do not believe that Aymad Fadlallah deserves this honor, just know that you're in the minority, that you have the unpopular opinion, and the entire city of Dearborn is paying attention to your vote. I urge you to vote in favor of both resolutions. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Sam Baydoun. Commissioner Sam Baydoun.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm a Dearborn resident and a community member. Distinguished board members, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Dearborn community, I stand before you tonight to speak about the eternal legacy of Mr. Aymad Fadlallah. I'm a product of the Dearborn Public Schools. I graduated from Fortson in 1981 and Henry Ford College in 1984. Mr. Aymad Fadlallah has impacted the lives of thousands of students who became very productive members of our society. The lawyers, the doctors, the business owners, and many of them are here tonight. These professionals are standing on the shoulders of this giant, Mr. Aymad Fadlallah. Mr. Aymad Fadlallah impacted the life of Abbas Alawi, who is working on formulating policies for a member of Congress in the halls of Capitol Hill. He impacted the life of Bilal Baydoun, my nephew, who was working for the Clinton Foundation, writing briefs for President Clinton. He impacted the life of the so eloquent speaker, Maryam Jalool, who was the first Hijabi woman to attend Harvard University. Naming the atrium at Fortson High School and a conference room at Stout pale in comparison to the contribution of Mr. Aymad Fadlallah. Let us honor Mr. Fadlallah's legacy by voting unanimously to pass both resolutions tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Judge Sam Salemey, who is also a committee member.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, Madam Solicitor General. I would like to speak on behalf of the committee, and I don't find it necessary to repeat everything that your honorable board allowed me to state last time I appeared before you. At this point in time, I'm fairly optimistic and extremely hopeful that the presence of this honorable audience and the wave of the speakers before me had made a compelling case to not only honor Aymad Fadlallah with the naming of the two locations that the committee advanced to you, but also to hear about the impact this man had on the entire school board and on the entire city. At this point in time, I just want to make one observation and one comment. I have noticed that our superintendent, the Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Maleko, everywhere he goes, he carries with him a miniature board that bears a very simple, yet very profound theme: Students First, Inspire, Educate, and Celebrate. This is a manifestation of the spirit of Aymad Fadlallah. Aymad Fadlallah put students first. And he not only motivated them, inspired them, but also made all resources available to make sure that they continue their education, as you have heard from so many speakers tonight. And he also did everything within his power. And I heard someone say that he, in return, got a backlash. It was more than a backlash. It was pure intimidation and harassment. But he never wavered, because that is Aymad Fadlallah. And the comment that I want to make, and I believe that's the argument that was made earlier, precedent. It is a legitimate argument, no question about it. But precedent... But precedent was never and neither intended to lock us in the past nor to stifle our progress or our creativity. If Ahmad Fadlallah was going to follow the precedent that was immediately set before him at Fortson High School, we would not be here today. Ahmad Fadlallah set a precedent at Fortson High School and set a precedent in this district. And I trust your board will have the courage and the foresight to set a precedent tonight by naming the two locations that the committee advanced. Thank you very much.
And Madam President, that is all for agenda items. Now moving on to non-agenda items. First, we have Mr. Hussein Baydoun, and he wants to speak to the board about FOIA requests.
Superintendent, school board, I'm a little ashamed and embarrassed to be up here today, and I just want to withdraw the comments I did want to make tonight. I wasn't aware of what was taking place in our community. I apologize. I teach and I coach all day, and I was not aware of what was going on with Mr. Ahmad Fadlallah. I had many cousins and friends who attended Fortson under his watch, and they had a lot of positive things to say to him, to say about him. I'm a product of Dearborn Public Schools. I attended William Ford, Oakman Elementary, Lori Middle School. Unfortunately, I was not able to go to Fortson High School under his watch, and I just would like to apologize to his family, because it should be a night all about him and Aliya Hummum, Mr. Ahmad Fadlallah.
Next, we have Mr. Devin Dewey, who wants to speak to us about Young Fives program.
Kevin.
Kevin, yep.
I said Kevin.
Hi, I'm Kevin Dewey. I'm kind of sorry I didn't go to Stout and Fortson. But I'm, I'm a proud product of Lindbergh Elementary, Adams Junior High, don't look for it, and Dearborn High School, Wayne State University, and I've been a full-time faculty at Henry Ford College for 24 years and still counting right now. Thanks. We've got a great president. Oh, oh, hi, sir. Anyway, thank you Superintendent Maleko and President Petlicoff and all the trustees for hearing me. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Young Fives program, citywide, but also particularly about Lindbergh. I am, as I said, a product of the Dearborn schools, the Dearborn culture, and I'm thrilled and pleased and honored to raise my three children in Dearborn. And my eight-year-old was in the Young Fives program and is now in second grade at Lindbergh. My six-year-old was in the Young Fives program last year and is now in kindergarten, and I'm really excited, looking forward to the possibility that my four-year-old will also have the opportunity for Young Fives this fall at Lindbergh. So I wanted to speak on behalf of the program and that, to assure the board that the PTA of Lindbergh and many of us parents that have students that have gone through and children that have gone through the program are here to help work, to support the program, and to help people understand the value of it. Neither of my boys would have been comfortable starting kindergarten when they did. And so having the Young Fives program help them get assimilated to the culture of being in that facility, everything from playground protocols to what it's like to sit in a classroom for a lot of hours every day. And this is the reason for the success that they're having in kindergarten and second grade at this point. So I just want to assure you that we parents and the PTA are thrilled to be able to help support the program and help let others know the value of it. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have also addressing the Young Fives at Lindbergh is Ms. Brandy Ahmed.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko and fellow board members. I'd like to recognize the gentleman everyone's talking about. I did not know him, but he sounds like a wonderful man. So I was happy to hear all the stories, and thank you for educating me on him. I am here to address some concerns of mine with the Young Fives program being possibly canceled over at Lindbergh. One, I really want to put my input that I have only heard great things about the Young Fives program. I currently have a stepson there at Lindbergh. He's in fifth grade, and my daughter is set to enroll in the Young Fives program at Lindbergh. So I was a little disheartened to hear that it might possibly be discontinued. A lot of my concerns that I'd like to address and would like to echo for some of the parents that could not be here today, there are concerns, and I know Mrs. Mary, I'm afraid to say your last name, Petlock, yes, yes. A lot of them, you know, raise the voice, the concern that this is not a program that is being spoken about, or the parents are not being informed, really. I have yet to hear anything about it from the school. It's all been through the parents. Even regarding this matter, I was not able to attend the PTA meeting. And I would say I'm a pretty involved parent for the most part with my stepsons, but I had no idea that this was something that was going to possibly cancel until parents started getting to me, knowing that my daughter was set to enroll. So I really would urge the board to look at how the information is provided to the parents, especially, again, I'll echo it, a lot of parents have, you know, said to me, you know, things are not going out on the blogs. This is, you know, the first mention of it, of anything being said, because there is now a concern that there's not going to be a program there. I really feel, let me look at my notes here, some of the questions I have, I know that you were saying, the young lady over here was saying that they might do a preschool program. I'm a little confused with the difference between a preschool program versus a Young Fives program would be. I also feel like that would bounce a lot around a lot of children, especially if you're not canceling the program, but rather just moving it to HAG. But then the children who are supposed to go back to Lindbergh would be bouncing around, and I don't think that is beneficial, and I certainly don't think that is a Students I think, I think other than really also echoing the great deeds and losing my words here from Mrs. Shrap, the teacher over there that does the Young Fives program, I've heard great things about her. I've heard that she is very engaging and positive in the community. I really urge the board to urge the administration over at Lindbergh to keep the program there if the numbers are there. And it should not be about numbers. It definitely should be about Students First. And I'm really hoping that it stays that way and that I can enroll my daughter next year.
And that is all for the blue cards.